Burgess?
Here.
Here.
Takes your questions?
Here.
And move to number two, review request for a Class 8 application for 1 through 8 Neighborhood Plaza. If you're looking for it, can you show us that phone number right there? We'd ask that you speak loudly to the mic, because you know it sounds like you're speaking loud to people in back and they don't hear you. Alright, do your name and still your last name, if you go first.
Jack Lacer, L-I-E-S-A-N-E-R.
Thank you very much. Alright, we turn it over to you, you can tell the board what you're looking for.
I'm looking to purchase the Storybrooke Plaza 1 through 8. And looking for a Class 8 as part of my position by the property.
Okay, well, we'll look to the floor for the trustee to have any question. Mr. Lacer is looking to purchase the remainder of Storybrooke Plaza. If you remember, we gave a Class 8 to the daycare center. Uh, Mr. Lacer is looking from the daycare center going all the way to where old consumer used to be. And uh, he's looking to purchase that building or that remainder of those buildings, however, he's asking for a Class 8. Uh, and that's in contingents, if he receives a Class 8, I guess you're going to purchase the property.
That's correct.
Um, so that's why he's coming to the board, uh, and asking if it's possible for him to have a Class 8, so if he can go forward on purchasing these properties. Uh, so what we're gonna do is, if you don't have anything else, right now, we're moving up to the board, let's see what kind of questions they have for you. Trustee Jones.
Um, do you have, what is your plans to expand on Storybrooke Brook, or what do you plan on doing right now?
I work with a group of doctors that all work with occupational medicine, so they use working carpentry, therapy, uh, in their area. I'm hoping they understand.
And what is the timeframe you're trying to, that you're looking at, once purchased the property?
I would say later part of this year.
Trustee Burgess?
Yes, Mayor, um, sir, I just wanted to, a couple of things. First of all, are you going to change any of the tenants that are there? Are you planning on, well, basically, are you planning on doing upgrades and things like that to the building?
To the parking lot and some more, parking and lighting.
Parking and who?
Parking lot.
And?
Lighting.
Okay, that's, that's a good thing. That's a long story. Second of all, um, all we can do is, all you can do is apply. And also, all we can do is give you the point to do that. If you're rejected by the next people you have to go to, are you still thinking about moving or doing that?
Well, the Class 8 program makes you be entitled for being in for the position for a property. And we would push forward.
Yeah, we would love to have, you know, something there, we need commerce, we need retail. And I'm hoping it's just not, that you're not just focusing on the doctors, that you're looking for some other type of commerce to come in and, you know, open up shop there. Because that's a nice, nice area. So, I'm just hoping that you just want, just stay just at the doctors, because I know, you know, uh, there's other things that you can do with that. I don't know how long the, um, post office is gonna be there, but I'm sure you've already looked into everything. So, basically, you're saying that you'll go ahead and you'll go forward, whatever you have to do, as long as you get the Class 8 from us?
Correct.
Okay, that's great.
Just one little clarification real quick, the Class 8 does not come from the Village Stock Village. The Village Board had a resolution for that, saying that we're in favor of this development. And he has to, Mr. Lacer has to approach Cook County, and Cook County has to approve the Class 8.
Yeah, that's what I was telling you, because it's not contingent, I mean, we could say, okay, it's fine with us, but they have to find us.
Right, right. Any other questions? Trustee.
You were taking the property, uh, the, the parking lot and there's an access road in the rear. You're taking that, how far does your property go, all the way past that road in the rear? There's a road that goes behind the building?
Correct, and I don't have a copy of the property, sorry. I don't know the corner of the point to the property.
Okay, and, 'cause I know it extends past that road just a little bit, and I goes, I don't know how far it goes in the east, it goes a little ways too. Uh, and you're just, you're just mainly taking where the old building is, uh?
Yeah, it's like units 1 through 8.
1 through 8, you said?
If you picture the whole piece of the picture, from that, it's going all the way up to where it stops, and there's a gap between the building and the daycare center. You're taking all the way to the end. Those are my two.
Alright, as Trustee Burgess mentioned, there's a couple of tenants that are already, uh, you're not planning to move those out, or not stay, right?
Correct.
And, once again, I think Trustee Burgess or Trustee Jones asked, you will move forward, uh, if we can be this okay, you'll continue to move forward, huh?
Uh, we'll, we'll move expeditions in Cook County, so pick your resolution and do the paperwork.
Okay.
Any other questions? By seeing that, I would ask, uh, do you want to have, uh, I guess, consensus with the trust, or the attorneys, to move forward on putting the resolution together? And have this on the agenda to approve next Tuesday night? Do you want to have a problem with that? Alright, so the attorneys who draw the resolution will be on the agenda for approval next Tuesday night? Depending on the door. Alright, thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you for your time.
Alright, move to number three. Review ordinance, uh, Mini Check of Two, Administration of the Municipal Code of the Village Stock Village of Cook and Will County. Uh, everyone has a, uh, what should I say, an amended one that you did have in your box? Had the, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I had the opportunity since last Tuesday, I think, meeting with every trustee except for one, and took your recommendations, and put them into this ordinance. And so, uh, hopefully, there's not an issue. Talked to the trustees, the ones that have their committees that are in here, just to make sure there was no problems with the wording. And I believe I made all the changes based off our conversations, uh, the ones I talked, so, uh, now, if you have anything else since we've last talked?
Yes.
Trustee Burgess?
Yes, I just saw, um, I didn't, didn't see it before, maybe I missed it. Um, C, Standing Committee Meetings, um, number three, doesn't have a page.
Okay, yes. Uh, a letter triple I?
Triple I.
Correct. Uh, the chair is responsible for posting and verifying the timely posting of all meetings in accordance with the local ordinances and the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, um, if you already have a designated date, and this is your designated time, do you still need to post if you're? In other words, if your, if your meeting's gonna be every first Tuesday, and it's already on the calendar that's provided, do you still have to come up and post that, that date 48 hours or whatever? Ahead of time, or is it automatic if it's on the, uh, on the calendar?
No, you do have to post it, it's just like a regular board meeting, all of our board meetings throughout the year here are, um, are posted out there, so we know exactly where to have meetings. However, we still have to put out in 48 hours, so it's, uh, the agenda. So, subcommittees, we have to make sure they have an agenda for their meeting, and those have to be posted 48 hours, correct?
Yes.
I think 48 hours according to the Open Meetings Act.
And then also, uh, do we, and I'm asking this to do the village clerk, um, they have to give you a copy of that too, correct? Because I did that before, they would say they're already on the, uh, on the calendar, you know, why do I need that? So, that's why I'm just asking.
No, I personally don't need a copy of your agenda as long as it's posted in the hallway.
Okay.
Just like I don't need a copy of your minutes until the end of the year.
But that's what I, that's another thing, right?
Right, I would personally prefer, as it's always been done at the Village Clerk's office, at the end of the year, all committees turn in a packet that includes their agendas and minutes from the year. Otherwise, I have to file for all these committees throughout the year, I'd rather have one packet.
So, we can take out double I? Or if you want to insert that stating that the village clerk would rather have those meetings and those minutes, um, given to her annually?
I still would like, I'm saying, I still would like to be notified, because I do keep up with the village calendar.
Right.
I do, I do post to the village calendar, I just don't post actual agendas to the halls. That's what's important. And the reason, I asked the mayor the same question, the difference between the calendar of states, the standard time, what do you mean every month? And an agenda is like, for month to month, your agenda will change. Maybe they'll be talking about something that residents want to be informed about. That way, if it's posted in the hallway, and it's an agenda item that's important to them, they will, they know to come to that particular meeting. So, you can't really just post a blank agenda every month.
Right, yeah, I mean, that is, right, if you want to post an agenda. But I'm just wondering, double I, do we need, can we reword that to state what you just stated?
But again, double I is, no, the chair is responsible for notifying the village clerk of all meetings.
Correct.
Uh, again, the meeting at the beginning of the year, you say we're having meetings all through here.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
There's one month that changes, notifying the village clerk, if anyone calls and says, you know, is the Public Works Committee having a meeting? Uh, still having a meeting this next Tuesday, the village clerk would be able to say, well, no, that meeting has been pushed out one week.
I mean, that part makes sense, if your, if your dates change, that part makes sense. But if you tell them that you're gonna have the third Wednesday of, of the month at 7 o'clock at Village Hall, would she need something in writing every single time, every month, or?
No, you're right there, what we're saying here is, you need to notify, if you want to put out an entire calendar like we do for the village board, you can say during the month of January, or if there's a date in February, as long as the village clerk has that, that's, that's your notification.
But then can we, can we change to say that if your meeting day changes, to notify the village clerk?
Oh, no, you're still notification, you're still notifying her.
Okay.
Um, you're, you're, if you want to have a calendar for the whole entire year, that's your notification. Here's my answer.
Right, I mean, that's what I'm saying, because she asks for a calendar every year, she asks whether your meeting's gonna be, and if you do change it, quite naturally, you would notify her to let her know that it's not gonna be on the second Wednesday, it's gonna be on the third Tuesday, or whatever the case may be.
I would prefer only to notify if it's changed.
That's why I was, that's why I was asking for this to be changed, to say that.
But if you say that, I need to be notified of all meetings, if you notify me, once all these committee meetings get set, and you're all sending me emails that you're running, we have to notify.
That's what I, that's what I just said, that's, that was the reason for that, that's why I was asking, do we still need to, once she has established a calendar, unless we change, do we still need to notify her? Because we're gonna put, like you stated, we're gonna put it up out there, so if I'm gonna give her a copy of that, if that's what you're saying, that we should do, that we should give her a copy of the agenda that we're gonna put out in the hallway, or not? And that's why I was asking.
There, there's no 11 other notifications going to village clerk, as long as you have a calendar for the year, that would be your first notification, that's all you have to do for the entire.
That's why I was asking, should we change that?
So, that's part of notification. I think, if you want to change it, maybe we need to say that, um, the chair is responsible for notifying the village clerk of all meetings. Again, if your meeting changes, you're still notifying her.
That's, that's, I'm just saying, if a meeting changes, then yes, we should notify her.
So, if it changes, to meet to the, to the set meeting date, if you want to put something in there.
I was just, you know, because, no, I'm just asking that, because I don't wanna do one thing, and then it's told to be something different, that's what I'm asking.
I have our attorney, it's the legal terms, on how we have to add it in there.
That's what we pay for.
Again, still the board has to notify the village clerk, if it's only one time, or if it's 12 times throughout the year, however you want to do it, it's actually not bad.
Question?
Yes, Trustee, your comments?
So, if we submit a, you know, Hall of Relations Committee needs the first one, they are, but like I said, the last board meeting, we will not be meeting this Wednesday. So, does that notification, is that sufficient notification of a meeting? Or does it have to be written to the clerk?
What, which one?
Supposed to be in written form.
I do have to write one.
No, it shouldn't be in written form, because that would, the village clerk would have it on fire.
That makes sense, that makes sense, that makes sense, to, to have a paper trail.
Correct.
So, if we do, I mean, but that part, I have no problem with that, I have no problem with if you change things, notify her, so she has a paper trail, so you can have two paper trails. But my question was, that we need to, you know, notify, but if you want to keep it that way, then, you know, that's fine, if not, then. Because a lot of things, you're talking about a lot of committees, a lot of different changes, other things, it has to be done. And I would think that, when we put that agenda out there, that would be a notification enough, because I have asked the village clerk, and I gave her an agenda, and she said, I don't, I don't post that, there's nothing to post. So, I just wanna, just wanna know, okay?
I don't want to say that.
I didn't say you didn't, but I know you told me that I don't post that, okay?
How about if you just changed the, uh, the language, that the chair is responsible for notifying the village clerk in writing of all meetings, uh, at the beginning of the year, and notifying if dates are changed prior to that meeting date?
That's, see, that's, that's what I said, that's what I said, that we should do that, that would be, I don't think that'd be better.
Right. Twenty, twenty two.
He can pay you, huh?
Alright, any other questions? Alright. So, move to line number four, motion to approve the ordinance, Mini Check of Two, Administration of Municipal Code of the Village Stock Village Clerk in Will County, Illinois, with the amended changes that were so quoted by the village attorney.
So?
The motion is, the motion is their second. And the motion is second, village clerk, please call, oh, sorry, any question or comments? Village clerk, please call.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Takes?
Motion, Chair, move to, uh, bareable committee appointments. Alright. Okay, Mayor's appointments are for the first one, I don't stub myself on my own notes, so, under Budget, Finance, and Community Relations, uh, we got Williams as chair, Tate as vice chair, Public Works.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before you go in your further, you want to take a joint vote by individual? No, no, I was gonna ask you, can you clarify what you just said? Because that is a very, we talked about that. What's the difference between chair and co-chair, both of them being co-chair?
Well, you have one at the chair, they, they work together, so when we look at standing committees, it's good to say something. Uh, so, okay, standing committees, uh, standing committees, meetings of standing committees are held, are called the chairperson, the committee, at such a time and place, may be designated in the call, in accordance with all local ordinances and open meetings act. Okay, we write off of the other two, standing committees, um, the village administrator should design, I'm sorry, should designate a liaison for each standing committee. Uh, recommendation by a standing committee to place an ordinance or a resolution on the agenda, that is voted on the board, a regular scheduled board meeting, uh, shall have the unanimous consent of the committee. Remember, you have two trustees on your committees, both, both the trustees, whatever committees you're sitting on, you have to agree, to be able to get an ordinance or resolution to the village board, um, for, uh, for vote.
Okay, but that's, okay, that part itself is a long term, I'm wondering, when you say chair and co-chair?
Right.
It would seem that chair would be in charge, and co-chair would, you know, and that's why I'm asking, can't you just say co-chair, co-chair? I mean, that's what I'm asking, and the lawyer probably can chime in with this too. If it's, if you have a chair, say, for instance, it sounds like president and vice president, that's basically what I'm saying. If it's co-chair, then they're both co-chair, they both have equal power, they both have equal, whatever, but once you designate chair, you say, okay, that's, that's your chairman, and it's your co-chair. You know, and, and it does sound as if one is in charge, that's why I was saying, can't we have just two co-chairs?
Your chair chairs the meetings, your chair is the one who's putting up the agenda, your chair is the one, like, under subcommittees. From time to time, is needed, the chairperson of a standing committee may appoint, or dismiss a subcommittee may have the co-chair.
Right, but what about the co-chair?
Not by the chair.
That's what I'm saying, that's, 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 that's the part of.
So, I'm gonna say vice, so a vice chair.
I would say, that's why I was asking, can it be, both be co-chairs? In other words, both can, you know, make recommendations at, you know, and appoint or not appoint, and they both talk, they both have equal, um, whatever you want to call it, but equal, uh, power. Because when you do chair and co-chair, that's exactly what you're doing, you're saying one person is the chairman, other one is not, so therefore, if there's a decision to be made, the chairman will override the co-chair.
No, because all decisions have to be by unanimous vote, so they both have to agree.
But can you, but you understand what I'm saying, Mike?
I think it's more, I'm trying to determine that there's a chairperson and a vice chair. And, and the ordinance, the chairperson is the person who's responsible for notifying the clerk of the dates, and setting the meetings, and putting the agenda together, uh, but then both chairpeople, both trustees work together.
Okay, but now, that's what I'm trying to say, if one is not, if one doesn't have more power than the other, then what's all the co-chair?
The chair, because what if you, if you have two chairs, like you said, what if one chair decides to have a meeting on Tuesday, and the other chair tells the clerk, no, the meeting's on Thursday? Then what is the clerk or anybody to think? Because both chairs have equal authority, at least this sets it up that the meetings will be set at a set date and time, the agenda will be set, but when you get to giving, both chairpersons are trustees, they have equal authority.
And that's, and that's all the reason, that, that was the whole reason behind me stating that we didn't need two trustees at each committee, one would have been enough to cover. Then you won't have that, that problem, you won't have that problem, and I talked to the mayor about that, that you won't have that in five, or whatever, I want it this day, I want it that day. If you have one chairman, who is that trustee, then that's the day it's gonna be, there is no, no, because one person may say, I want the meeting at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. Another one says, well, I can't make 4 o'clock in the afternoon, I needed it at 5:00. Well, I'm the chairman, so this is gonna be at 4:00. Those are the things that I was, I took that, that's why.
I would just interrupt, when I question the ordinance that was just passed by the board, and the language of the ordinance. Uh, and I think it's just really a matter of semantics, it's just, it's a chairperson just to notify the clerk.
Okay.
And to put the agenda up, and then when you get to wherever these communities or commissions meet, no one trustee has more power or authority than the other trustee. You know, you're equal trustee.
But you just did it.
It's just a recommending committee.
Okay, I'm just having to know this statement, that's in a perfect word, but I've been saying, when you're dealing with personalities and things like that, one person may feel that I'm the chairman, which, and basically what the mayor just stated was, the chairman would have power to do, to make that decision. And then the co-chair, if he disagrees with it, then I guess they, I would go thrash it out or whatever, but if both have the same, or if you have just one person, quite naturally, not a problem. But with two, then, you know, I, you know, I, I just, that's the problem, that, that, that is lies the problem that we have with two, because now you have to make sure that another person is, at least on the same level that you're at, and saying, okay, well, we can have this or have that. Or, as you stated, if you have, if you have a chairman, and the chairman wants to do it this way, and the co-chair doesn't, who, who, who settles that argument? The mayor?
But there's not to any, anything that the other doesn't, other than setting the meeting dates.
And that could be, that could be.
But the meeting dates should be set and scheduled at the beginning of the year, I would assume.
Okay.
If there's an issue between the two trustees that are in the same committee, it should be brought before the whole board to delegate, and say, you know, we can't agree on a date.
I'm glad you, okay, I think you guys will get one.
Trustee Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, as far as the Neighborhood Watch is concerned, um, I guess I'm the chair, and Trustee Myers is the co-chair, but we don't have those issues. I think it's just a matter of people talking to each other, we can meet before we have our meetings with the public there. And you're trying to make a decision of what you want to do, and you got people sitting right there, you need this in the perfect, in a perfect world, you wish everybody would get along, but you got certain people that like the chair, another people that like the co-chair, so they don't try to pull their ear on certain things. But Trustee Myers and I, we are one, whether we disagree on it, don't agree on it, we have a meeting before our meeting, the second Monday, yes, we are one, believe it or not, the Neighborhood Watch. And we have disagreements all the time, I want to do this, and Trustee Myers said, Trustee, like, you can't do that, but you can do this, I'm like, okay, well, I'll just do this. But we hash all that out, and we respect one another, as trustees. And now that I'm co-chairing with, uh, Trustee Jones, he totally chairs Parks and Recs. I'm not trying to make the agenda for Parks and Recs, you know, I know what's gonna go on at all the meetings, I see what he wants to do, he'll comment like, like he gave me the agenda, we talked about things. We get, for our, our, our committee, and we have our meeting with residents, we already know what's going on. And so, I just feel that a co-chair should also be a person that's there in case, if he's on the road, if he's driving a truck, or if he's sick or out of town, or whatever, I'm not sitting there not knowing absolutely what's going on with Parks and Recs, and all, I know exactly what's going on, because I co-chair the meeting. All the other stuff, to me, you know, it just needs to be a matter of mature standing between the two trustees. I think if you respect each other, and if you talk to one another before you have the meetings, you should have family, bill, or office.
And again, we want to use more the vice chair instead of co-chair, um, again, based off the attorneys, you know, that's just a vice chair, I do have written the vice chair down, so. But, uh, under Public Works, I have Trustee Burgess as the chair, Trustee Jones as the vice chair. Public Safety and Ordinance Review, Trustee Myers as the chair, uh, Trustee Williams as the vice chair. Neighborhood Watch, Trustee Washington is the chair, Trustee Myers is the vice chair. Housing and Governmental, Trustee Tate as the chair, Trustee Burgess as the vice chair. Parks and Recs, Recreation, Trustee Jones is the chair, Trustee Washington is the vice chair. Can I have a motion to approve those? Uh, Trustee Burgess is the chair, Trustee Jones is the vice chair. Can I have a motion to approve those? Second, motion is second, any questions or comments?
How?
Trustee?
Two comments. Um, two comments. Number one, can you please go over, um, the standing committees versus the subcommittees? I know, like, Budget, Finance, and that's Community Relations, I'm assuming that's where Public Relations would fall under, and then, um, Public Safety and Ordinance Review, I would assume that should we continue the Community Equity Partnership Committee, that's where that would fall under. Um, my, my major distinction that I want to address is, um, from what I understand, the two, the standing committees involve the two trustees, and then, the, um, it says in here that the mayor is a non-voting member of all standing committees, and then, um, the village administrator would be a part of that committee, or he could delegate if we needed Budget Finance, if we needed the Finance Director to be a part of that meeting. So, those three people, myself, Trustee Tate, and, um, Mohan would be a part of whatever standing committee, and then if we had subcommittees to follow up, that would include the village residents, and, and am I mentioning that correctly?
You, you did, in fact, great job explaining it. Uh, standing committees are two trustees, with a liaison, if needed, and requested, and have questions both of the village administrators, because as you said, through budget, if you need to have, uh, Mohan, the village administrator would appoint Mohan to come and answer your questions, and things like that. Now, when you look at subcommittees, subcommittees are, um, appointed by the chair, um, and are made up of village residents, okay? So, if, for this, I'm sorry, um, Budget Finance and the other one, um, just, I'm on Community Relations. So, if the chair says, you know, I still want to have the Public Relations Committee, I still want to have the Place Alliance Committee, um, there may be a budget committee, again, because, and, and when I look at this, I tell them, it's here if you're in Shkrein Field, okay, or if you're in Washington. Currently, right now, the senate has what they call the Senate Appropriations Committee, right? Those are made up of all senators. Right now, your committee, the Orderize Review Committee is, I'm sorry, no, I can't trust the mayor, but the Budget and the Community Relations Committee is made up of trustees, elected officials. Your subcommittees come from, as, as we should have talked about, the Senate Appropriations Committee, the senators would have their own separate committees coming off, and they're made up of village residents, elected officials, maybe department heads from the communities, people that followed in the congressional district, okay? This is the same way when you're looking at a smaller version of the village, the elected officials, the trustees are over the committees, and then they'll reach out to the village residents and inform the subcommittees. And the subcommittees are appointed by the chair, and they're dismissed by the chair. So, there may be something that comes up to one of your committees, you say, you know what, we need to have a, maybe a six-month committee, and we need to reach out to the residents. The chair may say, okay, we're gonna appoint this committee for, for the next six months, and have that committee provide input to, into, uh, this committee. And your committee would come back to the board, hopefully, um, we've talked about, um, housing, I'm not, I'm just throwing stuff out there, I'm not telling you what you have to do, and I'm, and if you don't take my recommendations, these aren't recommendations, these are nothing, I'm throwing it out hypothetically. If Housing forms a committee, and they come back, and their subcommittee says, we have a problem with rental properties, the Housing Committee would work together with the two trustees, on putting together ordinance or a resolution, to come before the village board, on the issues that were brought to them. And they would, they'd have to agree unanimously for it to come to the village board, as they call it, okay, that's one example. Uh, we talked about the ordinance review, uh, ordinance, because I keep on looking at Trustee Myers, um, when I met with Trustee Myers, Public Safety and Orderize Review, uh, again, a lot of this was based off our discussions last, last Tuesday night, that's how we came up with a lot of stuff. Trustee Myers said, I don't want those ordinance review, he goes, I don't want my community members. Well, that, to him, would be his subcommittee. He still has the subcommittee of Orderize Review, also has the subcommittee for debt recovery, those are things he's already working, and a lot of this fall right underneath Safety, Public Safety, and Orderize Review. Those are things he's already working. And a lot of those fall right underneath safety, public safety, and, and ordinance review. Uh, we've talked a little bit about, about housing, about the subcommittees. Uh, parks and wrecks, you've already had your committee in place. Okay, you've already got parks and wrecks, but you may want to put another committee together that says, um, community, um, I, I can't think right now, but, you know, you know, your parks and wrecks, you might want to put down your summer committee, summer program committee, or your winter committee program, or winter program committee. You know, those are things that you would have to decide what he's wanting with. Those are subcommittees. And those subcommittees are made up of village residents. And they're providing input into the trustees, uh, and things like that. Does that answer your, your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the second thing was, um, I know that the mayor, the appointments are made by the mayor. And I know that many trustees have been taken off, um, their committees in the years since I've been on the board. Thankfully, I've never lost public relations. Um, I was proud about the change of budget and finance. But, um, I don't know if this is the mayor's appointment. And I would just hope, as trustee Burgess concerns, I would just hope that any two trustees up here, I know that sometimes it will be a large group, sometimes we don't always agree. And when we disagree, sometimes I think that the board doesn't, in a way that maybe they shouldn't. I think that we could be better about the way we disagree. But I would hope that, um, in, within the two trustees, I understand the semantics of the vice chair and the chair. And I, I actually, like trustee Burgess, I do see why there needs to be a vice chair. But I'm just stating, as far as the two committees that I'm working on, I would hope that the other two trustees that I work with, that we can come up with decisions like meetings, like meeting times, dates, things like that, together. Because if that's not going to be appropriate, if that's something that we can't do, then that's a problem. Like, um, the attorney said, it needs to be brought back to the board because then those two people can't work together. Because everybody's goal up here should be to move the village forward. And if it's by these two, if it's by these committees, then so be it. But, um, I, I don't think, I would hope that nobody up here would take the term chair and think that you could run with that and say, "Oh, well, if you're not available on Mondays at six thirty, great, that's perfect time to have a meeting." I would hope that everybody up here should be adults and we can work together. So I, while I understand your concerns, trustee Burgess, I'm going to live in my unicorn world and think that those aren't going to be happening. And that everybody's just going to be fine.
As long as everyone remembers you're flying your committee. In fact, it's going to take all trustees to get the meeting.
Right, exactly.
Your board, your board have to be there if they want to have a meeting.
So I, I.
For the standing committee.
For the standing committee. That's right.
But, okay, so that's a good point. So if much to say with, um, trustee Myers, not for our committee, his ordinance review committee is a subcommittee.
Right.
I don't have to be there.
No.
And if I would put C O P under that, he wouldn't have to be there.
No, we're talking about standing committees, those are the ones that, well, all committees. We mentioned Florida committee, in fact, but especially the standing committee, there are only two trustees. For the, for that meeting to, to happen, remember, trustee, you both have to be there. A five.
They can't cancel.
I do. I do.
Question. Like trustee Myers says, an emergency, he's not going to be there, neighborhood watch is going on Monday.
That's a subcommittee. That's a subcommittee.
Neighborhood watch is a subcommittee.
This is a standing committee between you and trustee Myers.
No, no, I'm saying, you said, one of us can't be there, we can't have the meetings. You know what you're saying?
A standing committee.
You mean, what's your residents?
The realty unit residents is a subcommittee.
He's not there that time.
Correct.
But the standing committee.
The planning meeting.
Correct.
Got it.
And the meetings that you two have, have to make sure it's an open meetings act. Have to be posted. There has to be an agenda. So if you're going to be about public, if you're going to be about neighborhood watch, you need to make sure you have an agenda and it has to be posted.
The subcommittee said it can be posted as well?
Yes.
Okay, so the neighborhood watch, in your case, I think what they have, neighborhood watch, you two, neighborhood watch residents.
Subcommittee.
If you want to make something else or.
We.
We'll just move out within the hour before the meeting. So, hey.
How are we, how are we doing?
But it, okay, but if you, if you move it, okay, because that's open meetings act too. If you have just you two trustees meet and that's your standing committee, it still has to be open to the public.
Correct.
So what you should do, and what makes sense, is you can either have your meeting between the two at the beginning of your meeting or at the end, when you talk and say, okay, we will not take any more comments. We will just go to discuss what we just talked about and move on. Because when you two talk, there won't be any, you know, you can just have your meeting. That's just, just what I'm asking. But my, my question though, mayor, is this, if I request at my subcommittee meeting that I have a personnel from the village to come, you're saying that I have to clear it with Mr. Fairman first?
Go to the village administrator.
That's Mr. Fairman.
Right.
Okay, so I would have to ask him. Now, if that, quite naturally, all of our meetings, unless, I don't know anyone else, but I think most of our meetings are going to be in the evening, which is going to be after employee, um, time. So if I request to have a person there and the village administrator says no, I'm asking you as mayor, what do I do then? Because I may need to have a personnel there. And we talked about this, what do I do now if he says no? Do I come back to the board and say, okay, I know what's going to cause or whatever? What happens then? Is this no final or do I go or whatever? That's what I'm asking.
I think there's a couple things, especially when asking for a department head to come to a, uh, subcommittee meeting. There's a couple things you look at. First of all, of course, first, the working requests for the individual. But remember, the individual is, will be coming on their own time if they're not getting paid. So, uh, again, when you look at some of these individuals, you know, we've always done a lot, a lot of times in the past, is sent questions, had those questions answered, and elected officials, we responded to the, to the audience with the answers. Now, again, I look at this way, you know, we're requesting or demanding. I have a hard time demanding a, a village employee to be at a, uh, meeting after hours. Now, if they want, if they want to, that's different. I mean, I've seen sometimes where department heads, uh, on their own time, they come to attended meetings. So, again, it's, it's, it's a, I think what we do is instead of demanding or requiring, I think it's an asking first.
And that's what I'm asking. If I want, because I don't want to be the one that says this or this is what's going to happen. If, if, if we give it our information, I think it should come from the horse's mouth. In other words, whoever's doing that day to day should be able to tell the rest of the residents at that particular subcommittee what's going on. Not to be bombarded with questions, not to be asked to make decisions. Just let us know what's happening so they can move forward. Because people of, everyone's committee, they got to make a committee for a reason. And if someone asks, then, then a person may say, "Well, I'm on, I'm on this committee. I'm on, uh, finance committee." Okay, I'm on the subcommittee. Okay, so then I, you know, why do we, why is this money this way? They can give an intelligent answer and say, "Oh, wait a minute, it's not that way. This is the way it is." Because I got it from the horse's mouth, which would be Mohan. So instead of us trying to speculate what's happening, you have a person, it's just like a guest speaker. They come in, they give you, let you know, you give them questions ahead of time so they can be prepared and they come and try to answer those. We can't do that at the village board meeting. They just report on what it is that's going on, but they may have other questions. And the best way to find those answers is to have that person come and say, okay, this is how it is, either like it or don't. But it's not going to be a back and forth debate because that's not what they're there for. They're there to answer the questions that were given to them ahead of time and set the record straight. That's it. You know, and then that would be on the particular department, I'm sorry, on the particular, um, trustee or committee to let the residents or whoever's on the committee know, because it's an open meetings act. As you just stated, is, you have your committee meeting, it's open. So people are not going to ask questions. This person is going to come and present. And that's what I'm asking. And, and, and that's the only reason that I would see, it would be a problem, I think, coming and share information rather than we trying to speculate because then, and then that person would have questions ahead of time. It wouldn't be something that they raise the answer, "Well, what about this?" No, I'm, I'm coming here to, because you had time to get your, and formulate your questions at your meetings. All you wanted to do was this person to come out and try to answer those to the best of their ability. And that's what I'm asking. If that's the case, um, if the, if the village administrator says no, then it's not going to happen, then what recourse would we have as trustees? I would think that if you ask any department head, which is a salary person, to come out for something that's for the village, is something that's going to, you know, show at least some type of transparency. I wouldn't see a problem with it. Why you wouldn't want that? I'm not asking an hourly person. Asking a person that's already a, a, a person that's getting the salary. Hourly, yes. You ask them to come out and move chairs and tables, that's overtime. Yes, it is. That makes sense. But if you're just a person that's, that comes in, um, and then they can clear it with the, um, village administrator that I, I spent two hours talking to them, you know, then maybe they can work something out. That's not, that won't be the first time that ever happened. Because on the meeting nights, if they last long, quite naturally, that person that's on the, um, on the, um, salary gets a few hours off the next day or whenever they feel they want to take it. They get compensated for it. That's what we call comp time. So also, I'm, that's all I'm asking. Will he have the family say so or what do we do in a case like that?
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I don't, I don't see a problem with, uh, trustee, uh, having a person at the meeting. We're not designating somebody that they want to designate. I mean, if they want to meet later, I don't necessarily, that issue was about the location. I don't want to go back or something. If that issue is, I think they sure have that. We can have all the days that they have a meeting, have the person come work late, like twelve to eight, make sure that. All I'm going to try to coordinate, not kind of control, but, um, yeah, I see no problem.
All right, so, so again, if I just say you don't see a problem, if you would, make sure you give the village administrator a little bit of advance notice if you need someone to come over later. That way you can adjust the schedules for the, uh, the board.
Madam clerk, please record that down. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
And then I would say that if there's any problems or any issues, go ahead and come to me. But again, now that I said it, there's not, there's not going to be problems. Yeah. All right. Anyone else? Okay, here you go. I would ask for a co-chair please call roll. That way, which, and I am, Williams, please motion on, and Washington, please say.
So to go with you, um, what, sorry, what are you going to do?
Recommendations for the.
Oh, your recommendations for the, okay.
For the co-chair please call roll.
Ben, what?
Ready for the voters?
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Tate.
Washington.
Yes.
Trustee chair is. All right, as for a... Okay, as for the, the attorney has assured me it's a brief, recess, any motion to recess into the session? Here, here's a ten minutes. It's up to you, on, you, on, on the set. We got a motion in here, second. Motion to recess in the second session.
I motion both.
And motion is second. All favorites say aye.
Aye.
And second session.
All right.